Over forty hours a week. And then each week I will have two thousand two hundred and ninety-seven hours for, I mean, for the entire program. And each week I have two hundred and eighty-seven hours that I can put my time into. So I can see where I need more, where I need less, and you know, be able to budget a little bit correctly. Last year, the supplies and expense, everything was supplies and expense. Like, I mean, if you need a toilet paper, or if there were some common fixer by extra service. This year, everything is broken down, so it has its own line item and whatnot. The expense for the trips, concession stand, building repairs and upgrades, you know, they're all, they are what they are at this point. Utilities. Utilities is where I found a moving forward that we will be able to save a lot of money. I have, right now, we're currently paying nine thousand six hundred and forty-eight dollars for Fox Communication. That covers cameras, the internet, and whatnot. I was able to negotiate with them, so I have a three-year contract, which I will need your peg to go forward with that, would come down to six hundred and seventy-nine eighty-five a month. And that would be a savings of one thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents per year. I also have a five-year contract, which would come down to six hundred and three, six hundred and one dollars a month. And that would be a savings of two thousand four hundred and forty-one seventy-six. So whatever way you guys choose to want to go with it, let me know. Move forward, they'll start it immediately, and we can stop to save money there. As I was looking through the bills just doing this, I noticed some strange kind of things that, you know, the ice rink is the busiest pretty much from December to like April, May, June, somewhere around there. Our summer months are more expensive than our winter months. And I took a walk around, and I found the water meter, and the water meter also borders the football fields. So that's why we're paying so much in the water bill. The equipment lease payment, I believe this coming year is the last year that we will be paying that, so.
Half.
Half that, okay. So we'll pay half of that this year, and then we'll have that money also. The wind turbines. Apparently, the civic center portion is one hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year. We did look back at the electric bills from two thousand fifteen, they were one hundred and thirty-six thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. According to what I'm being told, and you know, the research that I've done, they, this will even out throughout the years of the twenty-year process and all that good stuff. So that is what it is, and you know, there's just other money that we'll be able to find elsewhere.
Why is it down as an expense? Because they pay the debt, debt, yeah, they pay the debt service on that.
So I continue to, you know, with different people asking me questions about things, I looked into the solar panels. I knew nothing whatsoever about solar panels, completely honest to you. I know that they're on top of the building. I did reach out, I researched it, found the articles of when they were put up there, how they updated, the town got grants, it did not cost the town any money. No energy directly affects the civic center at all. It all goes to the schools. But apparently, it is somehow in the, the energy fund, so, but the civic center does not, his exact words, because the project, the way the project was installed, the power does not directly affect the civic center bills at all. So that was another thing that I found out. We do have a startup course repayment, that was from two thousand and fifteen, when the money had to be put back into the building, so that will always be there. I didn't, I went with a realistic number this year. I noticed the last two years, the ice rink revenue was always projected to be a bit higher. Realistically, the way the schedule is done, it will make three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Now, can I interrupt you there?
Yeah.
You said the way the schedule is done. Is there a way to improve that schedule?
Yes, there, there's definitely a lot of ways to improve it during the day, we can be open. I actually reached out to New England Sports, they're automotivo mask, and I also reached out to Smithfield Municipal Rink. Both, we would not be taking business from, or, you know, they're not our direct-direct, but they are as close as we're going to get for competitors. They are both open during the day. They average daily twenty-five people. So at the end of the day, when you're looking at six hundred dollars a week of extra revenue, that definitely can be there. There's the summer rental. You know, it is what it is this year. Moving forward, things will be done differently, and the summer rental will sell out. The other thing that, just from looking around and seeing different things, is the, the public skating. We do it at a dollar, everybody else does it at five, if we could increase that, it's just another way to generate a little bit more revenue, and to actually even just cover the cost of the employee that is there. I mean, it is great to have for a dollar, but during school vacations, I could do that then, and they could still be getting that benefit of the dollar there. You know, like, just little different things that I was thinking, like, once a month, we do, like, have music, and I know Cranston does it, they do, like, our rock and skate, more or less, I don't know if they're more called it. But we could do something like that during high school games. The way it's set up with the, into the classroom, we don't really make money for our things to classroom, like, it is basically the high school kids. And again, the civic center is a place for the kids to be at and to be there, but we could do, like, you know, little, little themes where you sell a puck for a dollar, and they, whoever gets to the circle, will it make the game fifteen minutes longer? Yes, it will. But, I mean, it's just, it's something fun, something, you know, makes people want to actually get out there and come. Those are all definitely things that would easily increase the revenue of.
Laurie, how much do you take in for public skating at a dollar?
The most that we've ever had was during.
Roughly a year. What, what would you take in?
Oh, yeah, I don't know. I mean, they, they take in, like, maybe fifteen point dollars a week when they do it.
A week?
Yeah. And the most we've ever had was during the April vacation where I did it, where we broke, I think, a hundred and one dollars.
So you know them people going in there. For us to raise that to five dollars, you'd probably lose half of them. And the taxpayers do own that building.
Yeah, no, no, absolutely. I'm just thinking of different things, too.
Yeah, I, I mean, you're talking, this is talking pennies, and I'm not for that one bit.
Do we, we have a different rate for out of, if you're out of West Warren, correct though?
Yeah, five dollars.
Out.
Probably out of.
Out of town.
Yeah. So when we've gone to the field house, it was projected for the revenue to be nine five thousand. It is going to be at or over to see a hundred fifty, one thousand six hundred and thirty-four, thirty-four thousand dollars of that, as of the sixteenth, is all brand-new people that have come in and renting, and they're all my new friends, so I really like all of them, and I hope they stay forever with me. The middle school, high school does use the field house every day. So they are there every day, they use it for gym, they use it after school, they practice, whatever season it is, they are practicing inside of there. The trade-off is, is that the school department, if there's electrical problem, or the plumbing problem, they're right there. So I can't, you know, say anything bad about them being in there or whatnot. So move on to my office rentals, where I think that we can definitely.
Can I just ask if there's any way of increasing the advertising income?
I have no advertising income.
You have no?
No. I've never had any money for advertising income.
So what is this showing here, twenty thousand dollars?
Oh, oh, that's me. That's like what I sell, the, the banners, I, I have that in there, so we'll go, we use that part.
Okay.
So the office rentals, right now, we top out at nine thousand six hundred dollars. The yoga studio pays one hundred and fifty dollars a month. The, the two rooms that are on the second floor of the field house, they pay five hundred dollars a month, and the skate shop pays a hundred and fifty. I did look, I talked to.
Who, who set the rate to the yoga studio? That's a, that's a very large yoga, yoga studio, a hundred fifty bucks a month.
So I did look at the market analysis for two thousand seventeen, and I did go on the low end of all of that. And again, I did not take out a table.
I'll take a spot for a hundred fifty a month.
Yeah. And heating and electricity are included, too.
Really?
So I went on the low end, the low end is six dollars per square foot. Currently, the, the areas that are upstairs on the second floor of the field house are approximately, again, I did not take out a table measure, walked it out, it's six hundred and fifty-six square feet. So right now, we're charging less than seventy cents per square.
So you, they're all rented prior to you getting there?
Yeah.
They're still?
Yes, that's good.
Yes.
Did you say, did you say this, did you say the shop is a hundred and fifty a month as well?
Yes.
The skate shops, ten by ten room.
Okay.
I can't understand that.
I don't know, I've been, I've been in this.
The yoga studio is two of these rooms.
Yeah.
I know, but, two of these rooms?
Hold on, listen, ladies and gentlemen, anybody who's been up there, the yoga studio is at least, take down that back wall, is the size it is, with three showers, three, three bathrooms, and heat and electrics included for a hundred and fifty a month. Can I move in?
That's what I just said.
How long's the current lease with the?
It's just month to month.
It's month to month? Well. That should be revised.
Very quickly.
So again, yoga studio, I'll talk about that one, we're renting it for less than eighteen cents per square foot. It is approximately eight hundred and forty-seven square feet.
It's costing us money.
Just the heat, just the, just the heat and electricity?
And again, this is, this stuff that just needed, it needs someone to come in and look at it and whatnot.
There's nothing to look at with that.
She's always smiling up there.
Yeah.
Namaste, namaste.
So I'll just move on really quickly to skate shop. Right now, we're renting it out for about fifty cents per square foot. It's a retail, so that on the low end is eight dollars per square foot. So, and that's also something I would definitely like to, at some point, very soon. It's just money that we need to come in.
How often is that open, the skate shop? Is that open all the time?
Skate shop is, yes. Right now, they're obviously not open because the ice was taken out and.
Yeah, right.
Is that also month to month?
That is also month to month. So the advertising revenue, we are putting in ice advertising. The renewals right now are nine thousand dollars for the year, but we also took out the ice, and you can't ask someone to pay for advertising, and the building is closed. So that money will probably come in right at the end of June, beginning of July, because the plan for the ice is the third week of July to stop and put in, takes about a week, so then we'll be ready for August.
Refresh my memory, why was the ice taken out? Was that because of electric outage?
Yeah, all the.
The, the little lines were shifting, so, whatnot. The concession stand revenue, there's no inventory system, there's no tape system, there's no nothing, so with just a simple inventory system, we can definitely improve that. And the summer program, it'll bring in more than fifty thousand dollars. Last year, the summer program for E B brought in fifty-three thousand three hundred and one dollars. All the expenses, the employees, the trips, the bus, the supplies, even the payroll taxes came out to forty thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-three cents, leaving a start at the balance. This year are twelve thousand three hundred and fifty, thirty-seven. As of today, I have seventy-five children registered.
All ready for this year?
Yes. The new pricing structure, as soon as this new, new year will start, will go into place, and that has the holiday pricing in it, that will also help with, you know, bringing in more revenue. And I think I'm done, so if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
So Laurie, we see here a total deficit of one hundred and forty-six thousand dollars.
Correct. And that is without any of the changes, that is without the change to the utilities, that is without the change to scheduling, to bring in more money, that is without the change to.
What are the restrictions to scheduling? Why are we having restrictions to schedule in the ice rink, besides no ice up there right now, but?
Is this a lot of dead stuff, like, dead time every day?
Is it dead time self-created, or is it dead time because nobody wants it? That's my question. Because I had one of the leagues come to me and talk to me about renting it for the summer, but they said they were getting no interest from the person who's in charge of scheduling.
Right.
Which was a forty thousand dollar contract, by the way.
Yeah.
So is, is this because they don't want to schedule it? Or is this they're creating their own work and not creating their own work? Is, is, is this something that they're creating their own powers up there, meaning, because if I'm correct, the civic center supervisor is the one who does the scheduling?
Yeah.
So does he do it so he don't have to work, or does he do it because, just because? You know, because that's forty thousand dollars, and when I'm sitting here looking at a hundred and forty-six thousand dollar deficit, and I hear a league is willing to give you forty thousand dollars for summer rental?
First of all, why do we have that scheduling in that person's hands?
Well, that's, that's.
It's not anymore, it's gonna be, it's, it's gonna be in charge of the, of the park, a secretary now, because his, his job specs were enforced before the, the secretary was actually put in place, and her job is actually to do the scheduling.
Okay. So is it too late, did we lose that account now?
Yes.
Do we have no ice?
We have no ice.
No, for, for the summer?
Yeah, we have no ice.
Yes.
There's no ice in the building right now, but for next year possibly.
Yeah, next year.
Well, how long do we not have ice for?
It's going in at the end of July.
Oh, that late, that long, okay, I didn't know it was gonna be that long. Okay, all right.
And it came out in March.
So I, I'd like to address some of the issues you brought up. First of all, just looking at this, you went into a lot of detail in explaining it. Can we have that detail?
Yeah.
Because.
Do you want my notes?
No, I don't want your notes, I want it, and when you're looking at gen, just general wages, the breakdown, can you do a comparison as far as?
If you're trying to.
We, we, we've heard, we've heard a lot of, and it's not just me, but the entire council's heard a lot of issues going on at the civic center and the ice rink this year, all year long. And, and we're kind of waiting and waiting for, for things to come up. And I know you, you've done a ton of research, just by, I can tell just by the way you're talking, and you have a lot of great ideas. I'd just like to see, like, when you're saying civic center supplies and expenses, thirty thousand nine hundred and forty-one, what's the breakdown? How did you get to that number? That's what I'd like to see in, in front of me, so we can make a decision what to do.
Ice and expenses, it's at thirty thousand nine hundred and forty-one dollars, because ten thousand of it has to go back to the summer.
And that's, but that's fine, but if you can.
The realistic.
But if you can put it in, if you could put all that for a breakdown, so we could have it, and that way we can have it going forward.
One of the, I'm sorry to cut you off, but while you're on supplies and expenses, one of the things, in having a conversation with one of the town employees up there the other day, specifically about the grass being on the sidewalk, was, he brought his own weed whacker in, he brought his own gas in, and I said, I'm not expecting that, you should not be bringing your own cleaning supplies, why is that happening? I'm just dumbfounded, like, why, why a town employee has to bring Windex from home to do something in the town?
And buy their own supplies.
So where is, so what I'm saying, when they're buying their own supplies.
And then taking them back when the supplies come in.
Right.
Then they are reprimanded.
Right.
I mean, I think we have some serious issues going down there.
That situation is not, is not exactly how you said it. So we'll discuss that at a later time.
But is it, are people do?
I'm, I'm talking about individual.
Have to bring in their own supply?
Is it, is it true that they, they pay for their own supply sometimes?
I've never seen that.
Well, I could tell you, and I'm not mentioning his name, but he's employed up there right now, and he's only one there, so you can figure out who it is. Told me he brought his weed whacker in the other day, and I asked him specifically, why is it, especially, people coming in to vote, and there's grass on the sidewalk.
It was embarrassing, it was very embarrassing.
And I actually tapped him on the shoulder and said, I don't want to pick on you here tonight, but you're, you're standing here talking, why isn't that cleaned up? And he goes, that's parks and rec. He goes, I brought my weed whacker in to clean that up. Well, I said, you made more of a mess out of it. And, and again, I'm still dumbfounded that he had to bring in his own weed whack, his weed whacker, and his own gas to do that.
Yeah, they don't have enough there. Parks and Rec usually goes up there in their, in the rotation and, because the grass.
But that's mentality I think we have to get out of.
Right.
We, the town owns a weed whacker, the town owns a blower, I assume, to go and to walk up that sidewalk, and, and half, but half the sidewalk is covered in grass, right? I mean, that was, that was, I was embarrassed as a councilman. And when I walked in there, I'm expected to go in there and vote. And we had about twenty-five kids, young adults, playing basketball, all you hear is basketballs and whistles and yelling, which I understand, that's, it's a gymnasium, that's what it's there for. But the board of canvassers, I assume, or the town booked that out for the all-day referendum, correct?
It was actually, but the, the basketball was supposed to be in eight o'clock.
That's right. But it wasn't eight, no.
Somehow it was eleven, it was seven.
It wasn't eight, so who makes that call?
They should have early.
And they should have been told by whoever, I don't care, by the staff person we're paying to say, I'm sorry, you can't come in until eight o'clock.
And plus all the parking that was taken already by the school, people were leaving, they had no parking places, so that's something that we've got to discuss.
And I will say during the day, when school gets out at one-thirty, yes, it is chaos every single day. There, there's nothing you can do about it from one-thirty to two-thirty, it's chaos up there every day. You have kids that just got their license, you know, that is.
If I could, if I could just interrupt you, you're going into the planning and the development, how you run the facility. Tonight's option issue is the budget, so you might, if you want to put it down for a workshop, so they can explain things, she can give you a summary of what she provided tonight, by the, that might be better, but right now, it's turning just for the budget.
Some of the concerns here, Tim, is, is budgetary, and I'll skip that, but I was going on supplies, and employees bringing their own supplies in. That should not be happening, that needs to be told to every employee, and if they need something, they need to go to the department head.
So who do they, question, who do they go to? Do they go to you, or do they go to Laurie?
They go to me.
Okay.
I thought you said Parks and Rec, I thought you said Parks and Rec does that part of it, though, right?
Yeah. And then the other thing is, I'm concerned with is concession revenue. There's no tapes in the register. There's no inventory taken, as you just said. So these hockey games, I know personally, make anywhere between three to seven hundred dollars a night, especially if you've got two good schools playing, or it's back-to-back games. And when I'm sitting here saying, there's no cash register receipts, there's, there's, there's room for error there, there's room for.
Correct. And I think that, you know, now that it's been brought to light, now we, there's nothing we can do about what happened in the past, now we move forward and we fix it, and we find a very good inventory system, and we just move forward.
So at the end of the night, who cashes out, is the question I have.
The kids cash, they put their money in a bag, and then they.
But do they print out the receipt? So in other words.
No, there's no receipt.
So, why I'm saying, going forward.
Why don't we have a receipt?
No, let me finish that one. So going forward, are they gonna run a receipt at the end of the night comparing what they have in their bag and what's in that register receipt?
And the inventory that was in there.
The inventory.
You know, the inventory is one thing, we can always go back and count that stuff, I, I'm more concerned about the cash being made. There's no record of cash.
Look at the machine, I'm pretty sure it's probably quick simple to.
Yeah, but what's happening, we're leaving ourselves open.
Of course we are.
And that's the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard, that there's no inventory, there's no cash receipts, we don't know if we made fifty thousand, there's no way of proving that. And that stops immediately.
But the question is, if, how do we let it go this long, knowing it, I mean, obviously it's brought up to us, it's an, we know it's an issue, we're all five of us, I'm sure can agree this is an issue. If this has been an issue since.
It should have been brought up when it was open.
It shouldn't, no, it shouldn't have, never happened.
Yeah, but who allowed it to happen?
That's the question.
Across the first shift, and they go with the.
Who's in charge? That's the question, who's in charge? Because.
Guys, you, once again, you're now getting into personnel, you're getting into personnel.
But we're talking about money.
I understand that, but you're getting into personnel, you're asking who's in charge about the way the services are provided in the past, when tonight is the presentation of the enterprise fund. So if the enterprise fund has got anything to do with the services being provided between Parks and Rec and/or the DPW.
I'll, I'll make this very clear.
I understand what you guys are getting at, but it's just not on the agenda.
I'll make this clear and simple. Ernie, I think you need to sit down with Freddie and Laurie and get this resolved immediately.
Yesterday.
That's, that's no if and or buts about this, this is Ann Kristen. There's, there's, there's too many gaping holes in here that, and not saying anything's going on up there, but could cause people to insinuate that things are going on up there and whatever, we don't need that heading.
Continue this.
So, any other questions on the budget? Jay, you had more questions on the budget?
I'd like more detail going forward, and to be honest with you, it's, it's going to open up a lot of questions like this, because we're dealing with money, and I understand personnel, but it, it all revolves, it all revolves around this right here. And I'm not comfortable with this until we see that.
I have a question, who's, who set, like, the rental rates? I mean, it would have been previous to this council, did the previous council set the rental rates? So who, so which department?
I'm gonna guess between us, the finance director, and the town manager, who took it over. That's, that's my only guess at this point, and unfortunately.
The previous town manager and the previous finance director.
Not, not this town manager, not this.
I just want to clarify that.
Let me clarify that, yes. And, because it's been, the yoga studio's been in there prior to us.
Prior to you, or prior?
Prior, it was actually when it was privately, when we privatized it, that was taken over by Seven Eighty-Eight Sports, who leased it out to her. Now, I don't know what the actual agreement was between them, and whether or not they just kept the same agreement.
Is everybody up to date as far as finances right now, as far as their payments go for everything? Ice rink, ice time? Is there anybody that's, anybody that's delinquent, is what I'm asking?
Couple, but not anything.
Talking five hundred, talking five thousand, outstanding?
I know there is, there was a hockey tournament, I don't know the specifics of it, but I do know that they have been having a small issue with it.
Prior to the second public hearing, you could have the information provided that you requested as a summary from Laurie, and also have a workshop to get all these issues out, because if it's gonna affect the ongoing or the upcoming budget, you might want to get those resolved before the second hearing.
Okay.
And the reason why I think we're, we're like this tonight, is when we see a total deficit of one hundred and forty-six thousand, we have to come up with that. And we don't want to see a deficit, we want it zero or higher.
And I would be totally honest with you, if the ice rink is scheduled properly, you don't have a problem.
But we got a problem right now.
If the rentals are rented out for half of what the market value is, you don't have a problem.
And I just want to note that the, the wind turbine debt service, that's a big nut, one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Like, they'd actually have a twenty-four thousand dollar profit if it wasn't responsible for the one hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
And those, like, those were from two thousand fifteen, so ice rates have increased.
The rates have increased by almost twenty percent, so it's probably.
I think we got scammed on those wind turbines, to be honest with you.
And speaking of finance.
Because all we're doing is paying for them for eighteen years, and then they're no good anymore.
Going on the finance side, which everything's kind of, everything's related to everything else, the, the contract.
I will skip.
For, for the civic center and the, I called it, for the field house and the ice rink, as far as rentals and what we can bring in. Is that, is that in your lap?
I would.
Contract?
It is, it has moved forward again.
I don't want to hear that shit. If I may, that's been worked on by Mr. DiFiore and myself, we're putting in the appropriate language that clearly identifies that the property belongs to the town, that in the event the town, after a proper hearing, the council approves of a specific event, that'll That in the event that town, after a proper hearing, the council approves of a specific event, that'll be in there, but it's gonna lay out, you've got ice work contract, a field house contract, and then there'll be event contracts. That's been worked on.
So you're working on liability, the liability?
Not only, not only, not only issues pertaining to liability, but, excuse me, um, issues as it pertains to the, the inter-local trust, whether or not they're gonna have any problems. Uh, and then with specific events, because as we've heard on several occasions, people have issues with the class B license, that'll be clearly delineated. That state law and federal law are gonna supersede local ordinances.
Do you know when, um, will that contract be to us when, when we?
I would, I would assume that Mr. DeFiori wants to address it probably within the next seven to ten days.
And I'm gonna have to touch base with Tim this week. I'm hoping to get it to you, maybe at the next council meeting, definitely by the end of the second meeting in June.
Okay.
I will.
But it's gonna be, it's gonna be more intensive than it was before because it's gonna explain, when somebody reads it, now granted, I hope they read it, but it's clearly gonna explain who owns it, who's operating it, who's in control. And in the event we need an additional insurance rider, we'll get that. So again, it's gonna be, uh, event-specific and, um, venue-specific.
Okay.
There's three ice rinks. There's the fees, the three contracts, and the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Al. Now, going back one quick thing with the expenses with water in the summer months and, um, some of the other issues. I, I know the solar panels also fixed our roofs up there that were leaking drastically, especially on the basketball side, so they had to cancel events, so we got new roofs on it. But have we looked though, I, I know the school department does work with us when we have issues up there, they bring, have we looked at the expense and have we reached out to them to discuss the water for the summer?
We did not reach out and just, it's, it's just brought to you.
For now.
What I found out to you all and then I, whatever you decide, then I would move forward and decide to do whatever is needed to be done. I do have the breakdown of it. I can send it to you all so you can actually see how it is, um, and we can just go from there and maybe, you know, having a workshop may be the best. And rolling what they need to do or everything, just because we have to decide on, you know, what option are we gonna go with, the three or the five year or the cameras, how we fix the water. I'm sure if you give me a little bit more time, I'll probably find you twelve thousand dollars. You know, just, no one just ever has the chance to look into. So, I mean, there's lots of little loopholes.
So as far as general wages go, right, just looking, looking at your breakdown right here, um, and seeing that there's no ice right now, what are the people at the ice rink doing?
So there's no part-timers coming in at this point.
Okay.
Because, um, the shifts are covered. So there's no need for a part timer, so they, um, they is only one at this point. Um, he just is in field house because there's still rentals in there and the school is in there every day till at least five, five-thirty, like a day today, they were in there till five-thirty. And then the rentals come in after five-thirty.
Okay. So there's one, there's one part-time or are there two?
No, there, there's a full timer in there.
Um, I mean, I mean, two, there's, isn't there a two?
There's two, but ones are now away.
Oh.
Yeah. So no one's currently in there during the day and myself and his secretary are in there.
Right.
But then, um, at night, there's no ice, so he's just in there. And the second maintenance worker is on a flex shift, so if there's no rentals at night, he can come in during the day.
To do what?
Clean.
After the breakfast?
After the kids from school, like.
Eight hours?
Yeah. So like he'll work one, like he'll, he'll work eleven to seven, you're like all dependent on what's there at that day.
He's not a solid seven or three, so.
It was forty hours, right?
Yes.
Thirty-seven and a half, whatever it is.
Okay.
All right, we'll discuss that later. Any other discussion on the budget for civic center? Any public discussion? Mrs. Young, just come on up to the mic.
Gary Young, are these on by the way?
Yeah, they're on.
That's my problem. Gary Young, Fifty-Eight Times Street. Um, you already addressed, my first question was, uh, is there a balance sheet of this year's revenues and expenses to weigh against the anticipated budget? And I would just maybe suggest for the June fifth meeting or the workshops, if you're gonna have something between there, yeah, it'll take a little bit more time than, I know, going back to previous years. Last year was thirteen minutes, the year before, um, nineteen, I guess, gave it to me tonight. Um.
Well, we're, we're at actually thirty-five minutes now.
I'm sorry.
We're over time.
Okay. Um, I don't understand the position of civic center coordinator. I enquired about it and, um, managers, I have to say this correctly, Simmons Linsky, um, Simmons Linsky.
Simmons.
That there is no job description for the civic center coordinator, nor was there one for the assistant director there. And, um, I don't see that listed, so I'm wondering if that was eliminated from this year's budget.
The four positions we have right now is civic center supervisor, manager, marketing executive, secretary, civic center maintenance, and then we have part-timers also in the budget.
Right.
So, Erin, can you answer that?
Those are the existing positions we have currently in eighteen and they are the positions that are in nineteen's budget.
I didn't, I didn't bring the eighteen budget, but I believe in assistant director is also listed. I don't have that, you know, I can bring them.
It was?
Yeah, that was a, that was actually part of the Pox and Rec position. We actually cut that five thousand out of the budget, unfortunately. So.
I know we, I didn't cut that out of the budget. That was the director of Pox and Rec. So that was cut out of the Pox and Rec department. That wasn't something about the civic center. It's, it was a position of assistant director.
The civic, the civic center wasn't part of the two thousand eighteen, are you talking about this civic center budget?
No, I probably found the civic center budget from last year.
Yes, it did twenty percent. It was, um, I believe it was twenty percent. It came out of the civic center.
All right, we'll have to take a look at that.
Because that was who oversaw employees at the civic.
And, you know, if you're going forward with the, um, proposed facilities manager, is that gonna be on the agenda at some point?
As of right now, we're not going forward with it, but I know Councilman Lichardi will be talk, probably talking to the council about it. Thank, thank you, Mrs. Young. Any other public comment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Five-minute recess.
I could see it on here, don't get in the camera, but at least it taped, so. It's just older, I mean, not.